Okay. Well, I'd like to invite everybody here tonight. Thank you for coming to our regular Board of Trustees meeting, January 12th, 2021. Let's call our meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I'll start it off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Crystal, we'll take a roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Jerome.
Here.
Trustee Kenny.
Present.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Here.
Mayor Protem Knutson.
Here.
Mayor Hammond.
Here. Okay, any amendments to the agenda tonight that we need to know about? Take that as a no. Any conflicts of interest that we need to know about? Okay. Moves on to item B. This is community participation. This is the opportunity for public members to engage in non-agenda items. If you would like to speak up on non-agenda items with the public, raise your hand in the in the box, and you will be given three minutes to speak on an issue. State your name and address for the record. Uh, Crystal, we have anybody that would like to speak?
Yes, we have Sherrell. If you can state your name and address for the record, you'll be given three minutes. Yes, hello there. My name is Sherrell Teets. My address is 4525 Ingalls Drive, Wellington, Colorado. So I was wanting to check and see if you guys are having a discussion about the dispensary in this agenda.
Tonight, it's an executive session, I believe. Is that correct? Patty?
You are correct. That will be discussed during executive session, and public will not be part of that discussion.
Right. So Sherrell, we are, we are still speaking on the subject.
Perfect. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll close the public comment portion on non-agenda items. Just time. Bring it back to the board for action items. Well, actually, item C, consent agenda. This is a minutes of December 22nd, 2020 board meeting. Are there any issues with this consent agenda that we need to know about? And if not, can we get a motion to approve it?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. All right, moving on to action items. This is D1. This is the Elgin Street Sweeper purchase request. This was revealed to us and discussed in the capital improvements and in the budget. And at this point, we'll turn this over to Jim Miller to talk more about it. And why it's on our action item of the night. How you doing, Jim?
I'm doing fine. I think Bob was gonna handle some of this beginning. If not, I can take it. You know, Bobby, there?
Yeah, I'm here. I was just gonna do a brief introduction and and point out that it is in the approved budget. We're proposing to purchase this Elgin Street Sweeper from the Sourcewell government bid for an amount slightly under the budgeted amount of $244,000. That budget is shown in GO number 21185,009, and that's in the street fund. And then point out that Jim Miller is here to answer any specific questions you might have about the equipment. So I would open it up for questions at this point.
Board members, any questions for the to go over on this purchase one more time?
Or what's gonna disposition of the old sweet sweeper? Are you gonna liquidate it? Are you just gonna keep it as a backup? What's what's gonna happen with that?
We are gonna go ahead and sell that and try and get as much as we can for it. We're not anticipating, frankly, it is worth very much, but we'll.
Sure.
We'll put it on.
It's more than scrap metal.
It's, it might be, but we'll go ahead and entrance, take a, take a stab at selling it as a machine and see what we get.
Anyone else?
Got a couple of questions on the options that were added on with the the Midwest Auto Lube for the 7500 and then the in cab broom tilts on the side. What were, what are those for? I didn't see those in the below. Just an explanation of what they are.
The Auto Lube is an automatic greasing system. This thing has thousands of bearings. It's a moving part. So what we do is there's a big grease. It's in the, in the flyer, but anyway, it's a big grease system. Then as it moves through the road, it constantly greases the bearings and the moving parts in this thing in it. And then the other one is a um, the air system on the cab keeps the dust out. Um, right now, our system, we have those guys, they have to wear a mask, and it's, it's pretty rough.
So the, okay, so the in cab broom tilts, those are, that's the air system?
Yes, it's a part of the, the air system on the in cab.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, it's an action item. We'll open it up to the public at this point. Any comments from the public on the Elgin Sweet, the Sweet Sweeper purchase?
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board at this point. Can I get a motion to approve the purchase of the Elgin Street Sweeper purchase request, 244,000?
So moved.
Okay.
Take a roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, this is Brad March. We had a, when we had the mayor's meeting last week, there was a question that we just ought to clarify. It's my understanding that if these, that if items are part, if they're included in the budget for this year, they do not need to necessarily go in front of the board, but but gather that Public Works thought these two perhaps should go in and just alert the board to what was going on.
Right, right, right. Right now, they're on the action item list. We're gonna run them through.
Right, but I gather that's not necessarily something that needs to continue to happen.
Well, that's right.
Doesn't, doesn't the purchase policy make it so that it has to come in front of the board because the dollar amount?
That's right.
You are, you are correct. This is Patty. So anything, so our purchasing policy states that anything over $30,000 that was approved in the budget still needs to come before the Board of Trustees for approval.
That's right. It's on the agenda.
We had to do a little research on that, but yes, we found that, and so that's why it is on the regular agenda for one reason.
Right.
My.
As appropriate, as appropriate. All right. D2. The Vector Sewer Cleaning Purchase Request. Bob or Jim, do you wanna tell us a little bit about it?
Um, we'll probably handle this one the same way. Mayor, Mayor and Trustees, this is the Vector Sewer Cleaner. It's made by Ferris Machinery, also available through the Sourcewell Government Bid Contract. Uh, you may recall that we budgeted $550,000 for this in the 2021 budget, which you approved. The GO was 211805017 in the sewer fund. Um, we actually found the Vector that meets our needs for $490,453,000, $453. So that's a savings of roughly $50,000 from the budgeted amount. And we're asking you to award or allow staff to purchase this piece of machinery. And again, we can answer any technical questions, Jim.
Yep. Okay, board members, any questions for this? We saw it before, but if there's some new ones, let's, let's hear them.
Well, this is a new piece of equipment that we've never owned before. Is that correct? Sorry, Jim.
No, we have one that's 20 years old.
Okay, so the same thing as the other, as the seat sweeper, you're gonna try to liquidate it?
Yeah, this is, uh, this one has a state. We gotta stay in compliance with the state with the C and D.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, this is one that's really is required for us to remain in compliance for our distribution and collection portion of the utility. We have to be able to respond to sewer overflows and in any events along those lines within 24 hours. And technically, it takes the actor to do that.
Gotcha. Thank you. Sorry, Tim. I stepped on you.
Uh, not a worry, but that was my only comment, that I thought there was a regulatory requirement to have this piece of equipment to address specific needs. So that, that was, that's been answered. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Just had a quick question with those additional, there's the two additional options to consider for the amounts of 6,700 and 8,700. Could you just walk through a little bit real quick on those two?
So Ian, the Warthog is a head that goes on the end of the sewer or on that back truck. So we have one now that I have currently been. And rebuilt three times. It's wore out. Um, it's, it's an amazing piece of equipment when you're out there at 2:00 in the morning fighting rip balls or whatever comes down the, we gotta fight. Um, and then the other one. I don't know. My computer's not working. I can't pull it up.
Yeah, they can see is five user communication systems.
Right. So what that will allow us to do is if they go out and jet 5,000 feet, 492, whatever, of eight inch line, it'll go ahead and it'll allow us to download that into a PDF and come to computers um, throughout the town so we can see how much is being done and moved in a timely manner as far as cleaning.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And I'm really excited to see you guys come in that far under budget. So thank you very much for making that happen.
Anyone else? Okay. Turn it over to the public at this point. Any public comment on this purchase?
Mr. Mayor, I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Can I get a motion to approve the Vector Sewer Cleaner Purchase Request for 490,000, 490,453?
So moved.
Second.
I'm gonna take a roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Okay, let's take this to our next item. This is item D3. This is a resolution number 01-2021. It's a resolution designating a public place for the posting of notices concerning public meetings. Crystal, can you talk to us a little bit about this?
Yes, Mayor and Trustees, thank you. Um, this is an ordinance that's kind of a housekeeping item that the state statute requires us annually to designate the posting of our public notices. So our website is gonna be our designated meeting posting notice location unless that's not available. It will be the front door of Town Hall. Um, staff is also gonna post our notices to Town Hall in addition to the website. And this will be in place for all of our boards and commissions through the town.
So this is something that we do every year, Crystal? Is that right?
That's correct.
Right. That's what I thought. Okay. Questions, anyone?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Sucker, can you tell me the designated posting location, is that, is that in like the town's bylaws or the town code? Where can you find that? Like, where is that historically kept?
The state statute allows us to utilize our website as a public posting place.
Do you know by chance, have we passed a resolution that designates the website as our designated posting place?
We have. Um, that, this was something that was addressed, I believe, at last year's meeting at this time. Um, and the town, as I recall, I can go back and check it, trustee McDonald, but the, the issue, they, they changed the state law with the goal of encouraging use of the websites. Um, and I believe we did adopt a resolution. I can double check it for you. Pretty sure we did.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Just a clarification, just to make sure I understood you correctly, that while the website will be the primary place that we're posting it, we will also be posting a copy on the Town Hall. Is that correct?
That's correct. And this resolution doesn't prohibit us from posting our agenda on any social media pages or anything like that either.
Okay.
I would point out, though, that at last year's meeting, they did provide that I don't believe we're required to post them just in the event that we have an oversight of some sort. Um, but certainly, the town has posted them ever since then.
Okay. Other comments? Let's open it up to the public, please. Crystal, anyone would like to comment on this posting?
Mr. Mayor, I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, bring it back to the board. Can I get a motion to pass the resolution number 01-2021? It's a resolution designating a public place for the posting of notices concerning public meetings.
The move.
Second.
Oh, call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny. Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Okay, takes us to our next item, D4. This is a resolution number 02-2021. This is adopting a three mile plan for municipal annexations. Cody, can you tell us a little bit about this?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is Cody Byrd, Planning Director. Um, similar to the last item, this is really just a procedural step for the town. Um, what this is a resolution identifying an area for municipal annexations. Uh, it's a requirement of the state statutes. If the town desires to contemplate annexation of any, any land in the next year, um, we're required to have adopted a three mile plan. Um, in this case, the town historically has adopted the growth management area identified in our comprehensive plan as our three mile plan to satisfy the statutory requirements. We're recommending we do the same this year. The GMA is a little bit smaller than a three mile uh, from the town's boundaries, which is appropriate for Wellington circumstances. We don't really have a intent or, or need to extend utilities beyond our GMA. Um, so we would recommend adoption of the growth management area in our comprehensive plan. It's included in your packet, the map is, but I can also share the screen if anyone would like to see it. And I'd stand for any questions.
Yes, board members, any questions for Cody?
Just to clarify, in case some people have questions about this, Cody, um, from past experience with this, typically, the, the odd shape of, of, of the map is based off of the town's ability to provide the services to those, that we think we could provide services to those specific areas without, um, too much trouble. Is that correct?
Um, it does, trustee Jerome, that's, that's pretty close. Um, I'm gonna share the map here just for reference. And you can see here, um, on the shared screen, the, the red boundary is the town's GMA that is in the 2014 comprehensive plan. Um, this shaded area you can see is the approximate current town limits. Um, so we would obviously probably not be interested in extending utilities all the way north of Allo Canyon Road in the immediate future, but it's certainly an area that we believe would be part of the town, um, in the long range future. So I, to your point, yes, we would only consider utility infrastructure within the GMA. Um, but it's likely that on a short term basis, within the, the next year or two years, we would probably only be looking at minor extensions, uh, much closer to the existing town limits than the full extent of the GMA.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll open up to the public for comment.
We have Christine Gator. If you would state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes.
Christine Gator, 8132 Fourth Street. My question is kind of like trustee Jerome's, um, the odd shape of the red, um, GMA. Just wondering why, um, it comes in at some points and out at others. Why isn't it just a, a fixed radius away from the town or a straight line following a road? I mean, road. Why, why cut out some properties and leave others in?
Cody, can you give a quick answer on that?
Yes, I'd be happy to respond. Um, and if the, if Crystal could allow, I will share my screen again for reference. So to the, the question was why the odd shape of the growth management area in some locations? Um, obviously, some of these areas are, um, reservoirs, areas that we wouldn't need to extend any utilities to or annex those, those territories. Other times, lines, uh, are following, uh, property boundaries or parcel lines instead of roadways. Um, there's some, so some natural topographic changes, um, some consideration to areas that are fully built out or not fully built out. Um, here, this is all constant state conservation land. So it really depends on, on the situation and the, and the unique, um, area that you're considering. But, um, one of the other factors could also be an inability to provide municipal services um, or the cost of providing those services is just not feasible. Um, so those are a couple of examples, but any particular, uh, jog in that line could be a case by case basis.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Christine. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, we have Sherrell. If you could unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Hi there. Sherrell Teets, 4525 Ingalls Drive. I am wondering if this annexation turns the parts we're looking at for the growth management area, if that turns it into unincorporated or incorporated Wellington. My question stems from that as when it comes to people getting and applying for permits for upgrades, updates to homes, if it's incorporated and they are applying through, for these permits through the building department in Wellington. One, I know from experience, there's a huge lag in response on the building permits in general. What kind of conflict is that going to create with them getting their permits issued on time? And the other one is, are you going to be, if it is incorporated, are they following code? Which means, are they gonna be grandfathered in on their properties if they went and done buildings, stuff like that? If they've already built out when they weren't required to have permits, and now they are going to be required to have permits, how is that going to affect anybody in this highlighted area? And the other one was, it shows that you guys are annexing or kind of the growth management area affects state wildlife and the conservation easement. The area you're annexing, is that area the only hunting area in and around Wellington, Colorado? Those are my questions.
Cody, you wanna take a stab at touching on any of that, or just try to breeze over them some of those? I mean, the hunting areas, I don't know.
Yes, uh, Mayor, I, I can, I'll, I'll answer very, very generally. Um, just Ms. Teets, uh, brought up a, a number of questions, and most of them are applicable to what the board is considering in this particular agenda item. Um, on the map that, that was identified, this is just a map, um, clarifying where the town might consider annexations within the next year. Um, none of the properties that are identified are currently proposed for annexation. An adoption of this resolution does not actually annex any territory into the town. It's simply a matter of identifying for the state requirements, any areas in which the town may consider annexations within the upcoming year. So the, the questions regarding permits and state wildlife areas are really not applicable to what the, what the board is considering tonight.
That's right. That's right. Okay, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Galaxy Note. I'm not sure of the name, but if you can state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Oh, yeah, my name's Dan Waters. Uh, my wife and I have the property at 1601 East County Road 72 um, in, in Wellington. And I'm wondering what this is gonna entail for farmers and what we're gonna be put up against as far as being in the city limits and having businesses on our property as well, um, that we have been going through Laramie County with.
Cody, you wanna stab at it?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. And, and I believe it was Mr. Waters or Mr. Walters. I, I couldn't catch on the audio. Um, thank you for the clarification. Um, the, again, as we mentioned a moment ago, the, the map that's in the agenda packet that's identifying, uh, an area for consideration of annexations. Um, it's just an area that the town could consider annexations within the upcoming year. Um, not, no changes are currently proposed that would impact properties that are currently in the unincorporated Laramie County. Um, if the town were to consider an annexation in the upcoming future, it would typically be by request of the property owner. Um, so we, we wouldn't anticipate any immediate, uh, changes for you, especially at, at County Road 72, which is at the very furthest north extent of, um, the proposed annexation area. Um, and again, it's just for municipal consideration of annexations. It doesn't actually affect you in the short term.
That answer your question, sir? I think it's, I think it's important. Anyone else? Let's go back to public comment. Anyone else, Crystal?
Yes, we have Melissa Whitehouse. You can state your name and address.
Okay.
For the record, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Board, and Mayor Hammond. Very quickly, uh, thank you, uh, Cody Byrd, for explaining that no, nothing will get annexed in without a specific request by a property owner. Thank you for clarifying that. That's, that's pretty straightforward. Has anyone, um, from an economic enterprise zone perspective shown any interest in the next I-25 exchange up on Al Canyon Road and I-25? Thank you.
So. Heard anything about that yet?
Yeah, I, I, Mayor, I, I can just address that pretty quickly and say that we don't have any current pending requests um, for annexation in that, that sector around that Al Canyon Road interchange. Um, if, if there was a request, the first place they would come is the planning department, so we would be advised of any of those requests upcoming.
Uh, broke up pretty good.
Were you, was there a lag? Was, would, do I need to repeat any of that? Okay.
Well, you might, you know.
Sure. But my apologies if there was an internet connection issue. Um, so the, the response to Ms. Whitehouse's question was, are there currently any, uh, economic, uh, inquiries into development of, of land around the, the Al Canyon Road interchange? And the short answer is no, there have not been any businesses or entities that have reached out to town staff to. to inquire about development opportunities in that particular section of town, or up around County Road seventy.
Okay. Thank you, sir, uh, any other comments, Crystal?
We have Cam Teets, if you can unmute yourself and state your name for the record, name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, this is Cam, four five two five Ingalls Drive, Wellington. Two questions, I guess, um, will it require a landowner's permission in order for a property to be annexed into town limits? Um, and then, uh, the next question is and I don't want it to sound like a belligerent question, um, but i- it's worth asking. Given the growth in Fort Collins and given the growth here in the county, you know, around Wellington and whatnot, i- it's only a matter of time, twenty years from now, we're gonna become a subdivision of Fort Collins. Um, would it be a practical approach to look at a growth plan in conjunction with the city of Fort Collins? You know, they, they have utilities built around our town, they have water all the way north, you know, from their city. Would it not make a little bit of sense to start working with them, their utilities are a lot lower than ours are? And they've got the resources at this point, so, like I said, I don't mean that to be a belligerent question, but I think it's a practical question, you know, going forward here, that's all I have.
Yeah, okay, and Mayor, if I may, Mr. Teets, could you repeat your first question, I know it was short and I didn't make my note fast enough?
Uh, yeah, the question was, will it require a landowner's permission um, in order for their property to be annexed into town limits? Um, if their property were to fall in that proposed area and you guys decided, hey, I want this section, do you need their permission in order to annex?
Thank you, Mr. Teets, for repeating the question. Um, so, to answer that, that first question which you repeated, um, the town would typically only consider requests for annexation into the town by the property owner. Um, it's, it's uncommon for the town to go and approach a property owner uh, requesting that they annex their property into the town, it's usually at the request of the owner because they desire to develop it. Um, so yes, it requires the property owner's permission. Um, the, the second part of your, or your second question, I should say, um, was centered around the idea of, can we partner with Fort Collins or other uh, regional partners for uh, provision of utility services? Um, and that's, in, in short, yes, the town will consider those options. Um, there's often pros and cons to any, any partnership. Um, but Fort Collins isn't the only service provider for certain utilities in the vicinity uh, of Wellington, so those are being investigated as part of our comprehensive plan update. Um, and so we would take all of those options under advisement now and into the future.
Okay, anyone else, Crystal?
We have no other hands raised at this time.
We'll bring it back to the board. Also, I might add, a, a GMA established buffer, establishes buffer zones between other towns and municipalities and with their GMAs. And it's important to have those so that you can uh, partner on things that do come up and understand our boundaries, because we are not a subdivision of Fort Collins. And I don't know that we ever will be, we're gonna be neighbors for sure. Uh, but that's the intent of a, of a GMA, to just establish buffer zones so that it can be controlled as, as you go into the future, so people, they know their boundaries. Uh, board members, any other final questions, if I don't have any?
I, I did have a comment, Mr. Hammond, Mayor Hammond. So, uh, Mr. Byrd, I mean, the town, when we establish this GMA, does it not need some sign off from other municipalities in the county that our boundaries we are looking to establish are appropriate and, and not overreaching? Um, does that, is that clear?
I, I think, yes, your, your question's clear, Mr. Whitehouse, but just, just for, for clarity's purposes, the, the item that's before the board tonight is simply looking at the already adopted growth management area for the town, it was adopted in two thousand fourteen. And we're identifying that as the, the area that the town would limit ourselves to consider annexations for the next year. Um, we're not changing the growth management area with this action. We're simply using the already adopted GMA as a tool to identify where the town could consider annexations in the next year. Um, to, to follow up on the other part of your question, if the town was proposing to change its growth management area, which we may with our comprehensive plan update, um, that would require some coordination with the county and surrounding jurisdictions um, for changes to the GMA, and we'll follow that course of action when the appropriate time comes along.
Uh, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Any last minute comments, again, we're just, this is procedural, like, like Cody said, this is something we've had since twenty fourteen, we're not changing anything.
Well, I, I did have another comment, just, and I, I think this is one, I, I was sort of on the general process that I think the public has been asking questions, and I think we're still kind of learning how to respond in real time, and I think uh, this is a really good step forward that, you know, for some of the more direct questions that don't require some deep digging that be able to provide this information uh, sort of, again, at this time, I think it's great. And I think we're still trying to learn how to do this effectively, but I, I, what I'm seeing tonight looks really good, so just thank you, everyone.
Other final comments? Alright. Can I get a motion from the board to approve resolution number zero two dash twenty twenty one, adopting a three mile plan for the municipal annexations?
The move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Trusty Jerome.
Yes.
Trusty Kenny.
Yes.
Trusty McDonald.
Yes.
Trusty Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Okay. That ends our action items for tonight, good questions, thank you, public, for weighing in, appreciate it. Moving on to reports, item A, first one, town attorney, anything?
No, sir.
Town administrator, anything?
Well, of course, thank you, Mayor, Town Board, Donna Trustee, so, um, we're, the strategic plan uh, survey will be closing on the thirteenth, um, I just checked, we had sixty seven responses so far, which is huge, because we only had like thirty five last week. So, um, that's really encouraging and excited to get that information out to you guys. Um, I spoke with Linda Hoffman regarding the indirect costs that um, have been questioned that were kind of the pass through with our Laramie County Sheriff's Office contract. And we will be inviting um, Josh Fudge to uh, attend one of our meetings, he's, I, I think he's, he's I don't want to say budget director, um, I'm not quite sure of his title, but he is the one that helped put together that indirect cost um, information, so he'll be joining one of our meetings in order to explain that fully and be able to answer any of your questions. Um, another thing that we will be doing here shortly is, we have two new um, employees, one is uh, the director of the library, and another one is the manager of our Parks and Rec Department, and I think both of them, after meeting with them both last week, I would love for um, the Board of Trustees to be able to hear from them and hear their hearts and hear their passion about what they want to see and, and what they envision for Wellington, so, um, I will be including them shortly in a town of a, a Board of, a trustee meeting, um, in order for you guys to hear from them directly, so that's what I have, thank you.
Thank you, glad to hear it. Other staff communications? Okay. Board reports, anyone want to bring anything up?
So I did have uh, something that uh, came from the meeting with the CAC, um, as we're, they're starting to look into plans for the Fourth of July. And one of the concerns is they're just looking at different areas and ways they want to, things that they want to be able to do with the event. Um, we're continuing to kind of run up against a challenge where as much as we like doing Centennial Park, there are a lot of concerns as far as just being enough space to fit people in. And so, what they'd like to do is to find out from the Board of Trustees, they, they don't want to just up and say, we're gonna stop doing Centennial Park and go to somewhere else. Um, they prefer that the Board of Trustees make the call as to if and when we want the CAC to move the Fourth of July celebration from Centennial Park, um, where we would prefer to have that, so I don't, we don't need to necessarily have a decision right this moment, but if we can start working on that, especially if we're gonna ask the CAC to change that this year, we need to let them know as soon as possible if, or if we just want to say, stay with Centennial Park for this year, but let's start looking at some other options, so if we can just get that on an agenda at some point to just have some discussion and work through that, so that we can give direction to the CAC.
John, do, are they coming up with options themselves, do they have other ideas?
There were a couple of ideas that were thrown out, uh, they haven't put forth a bunch at this point yet. Um, if that's something that you would like them to put together some different options, I'd be happy.
It would be, yeah, I think it would be appropriate for them to come up with some ideas, that's the, that's the, that's what the board's all about, in my opinion. Rather than me do the thinking for them, I can, but you know, or the, this board, but you know, they're there, they know what they gotta do, they know their venues, they, they, you know, they all these people, and if they're about growing their space, some ideas, we're, we're amenable, I'm sure.
Okay, I, I will let them know at the next meeting and ask them to get together some ideas and that can bring that back to the board at that point.
Perfect. Anything else? You're kidding me.
On that note, I think it's really cool that we're planning these events. I, I'm very excited, so, that's great, um, so.
I hope we can hit it hard, I hope so.
Yes, I hope they all happen, I miss them.
Anyone else? Okay. Uh, I have, you know, I have a few things I could talk about, but I'm gonna wait a couple of days, uh, I think that some things have been floating around on the internet, not internet, our email correspondence, I think you've all seen them. Uh, trust me, I've got my head into all of them, and I've made contact with people and I'm talking to people. And I'd like to get a couple more days here to that some staff uh, weigh in and also um, uh, come up with some better answers for you rather than going to it right now. So let's just put those off, I think we have a couple of days here before, but I do, I do like what I'm seeing, and I think that, uh, in a couple of days, we might have a I might have a better answer for you than, than to just have a general discussion at this point. Uh, so let's, let's have a little time here, and we'll dive into those, and uh, we'll be able to maybe make a stand here on our, some things ourselves, so I have nothing further. If that's the case, uh, I'd like to move on to item F with no other uh, added comments. Uh, item F looks to be an executive session tonight, so. Brad? You want to take it to executive session?
Certainly, as uh, set forth in the uh, um, in the agenda, this would be an executive session for the purpose of conferences um, with my office, uh, pursuant to section sign twenty four six four oh two four B for the purpose of receiving legal advice related to the initial lawsuits filed uh, involving the initiated ordinances for the sale of marijuana. The executive session will not be recorded as it is uh, attorney-client privilege, I will provide a certification as required by the statute, which also needs to be signed by you confirming that the discussions that are held uh, constitute attorney-client privileged communications um, and therefore are um, not subject to recordation. Um, assuming that that's acceptable, we need a motion um, going into executive session. Um, and that needs to be approved by a super majority, as the board knows.
So moved. Second.
Seven thirteen is the time, can I get a roll call?
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Trusty Jerome.
Yes.
Trusty Kenny.
Yes.
Trusty McDonald.
Yes.
Trusty Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Does anyone need a two-minute recess?
Yeah, can we take two minutes and that will give, uh, Crystal time to be able to talk to everybody out that doesn't belong here?
Thank you. For the attendees in the meeting, we will be closing the rest of the meeting for an executive session, if you can um, remove yourself from the meeting and we will continue here in a few minutes.